All right, welcome. We will call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Cadesville City Planning Commission, May 22, 2025. First item on our agenda, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Anyone on the commission with a problem? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Hearing for a Text Amendment Due to Title 18 Building Regulations and Title 19 Subdivisions.
Planning Commission members, thank you for allowing me to be here with you. I apologize, I'm wearing shorts. That's not usual for me, but...
We all wish we could.
That's right.
Anyway, as you may have seen in the staff report, over the last two years, Public Works has been looking at and tracking potential changes that we feel are beneficial to the city in the subdivision process, in our standards and specifications. And the majority of these changes that you see before you have to do with those changes that we've been looking at as we interact with contractors, as we interact with developers, as there's been changes in the legislature. So, a lot of changes with storm drain, with runoff, some changes with street layouts, particularly how streets lay out in between different developments or potential future phases of developments. And there's also a change in the legislature this year regarding boundary adjustments that we tried to incorporate while we're going through these other modifications. So, all of these items that we have before you tonight are within Title 18 and 19. And with those being land use titles, we're here to discuss any questions or concerns. We've been able to get some good questions and input from Commission Member Ellis on a few things and plan on going through those. But prior to that, just wanted to see if there are any other questions, comments, concerns, requests for clarification on anything. If you have anything that comes to mind, in the meantime, I would like to go over a few of the questions that I mentioned. My apologies, I'll pull this up here. So, can I call you Katie just for like...
Yeah.
I apologize, I'm not trying to be too informal.
Since you're wearing shorts.
I guess that's true, I'm not trying to be too informal. But as Katie pointed these things out, first question was in regards to Title 18, Chapter 3. It talks about feasibility and low-impact development. Low-impact development is a requirement from EPA and the State Department of Environmental Quality. It has to do with retaining the first, like, 80th percentile of a storm, the first basically four tenths of an inch of every rainstorm, has to stay onsite instead of flowing through the pipes out towards the Great Salt Lake. They're trying to treat groundwater and improve overall water quality. The modification that we're making there brought up a question with Katie about the term feasible. And feasible is defined in state statute of whether or not water can be retained on a site. We have an LID manual that defines the process of establishing feasibility. And so, that great question because it is a very vague term, if something is feasible or not.
So, it's saying if it's required and it's feasible, then you have to do that.
Correct, yeah. So, if they meet all of the requirements for, hey, LID has to be instituted here, and it's feasible, meaning essentially can the soil take that water and infiltrate it? Or is the water table low enough to where you're not going to have standing water in an infiltration basin? The next question, Chapter 1 of Title 19, has to do with the approval of site plans. And again, we are definitely looking for any input that we can. The question was whether or not what we had in the definitions, Chapter 1, Item 7, in Definitions, 1917, is if approval of site plans, if that's, if I'm understanding correctly, if that's the correct place for something like that to live.
Yeah.
And I think a little bit of context on this item. We have found ourselves running into issues with developers trying to us interpret and developers interpret, what does it mean to approve a set of plans? Does that mean that the city has looked at those and said, yes, you know, your calculations are correct. We are confident that this is going to work. And in fact, according to state statute, that approval is, you know, we are ensuring that they meet our construction requirements, our specifications. And so, it's not a peer review. So, I think it's a good question to ask. We ended up placing it here after consulting with the city attorney on, you know, we have it in two different locations, talking about the approval of site plans. It does seem a little bit less like a definition and more of a statement. So, we're certainly open to modification there. But that's the context behind that item. This is in response to legislative changes. As we were working through our items that are kind of public work-centric with infrastructure, Melinda pointed out that there were some changes in the legislature. And so, we've made an attempt here to incorporate those changes. The question that Katie raised was the authority that the city has. It currently says that plats shall not be rece... Or she said, I apologize. Do we have the authority to say that the plat shall not be received for recording if we can't tell the county what to do? Is that correct? That mirrors what we currently have in code. And that's a question that we haven't addressed with the city attorney. But I believe the city engineer is going to be addressing that with him next week to answer that question, whether we need to modify current language or just incorporate a potential change into the draft that we have before you. Because I think it's a valid question.
Yeah, my experience is the county will record it. It doesn't really matter what we'd say. But it would be nice if they did.
I think that's the same experience we have had. And I'm wondering if that means that we won't take it to the county until we feel like it's ready to record? Which is our practice.
Yeah, it's just other third parties, I think.
And if that's the case, I think we can potentially clarify the meaning there. I'm just making a note here, my apologies. The next question, 19-5-8. What we currently have is a hyperlink in ordinance that takes people to an electronic copy of our standards and specifications. This, we've made a slight change to that paragraph, adding some additional information prior to the hyperlink. But as Katie pointed out, that isn't typical. I think we've got maybe one or two other instances in code currently where the, there's essentially a click here type thing. Yeah, exactly. So, we currently have click here to view the published version of the technical specifications and drawings and standards. As we worked through with the city attorney, this is where we landed with the language of just wanting to make sure that there's no ambiguity of those specifications and standards apply to all development within the city, whether that's commercial, residential, a small development, a large development. But it is more on the unusual side of things to have a text that says click here to see this. So, those were the questions that Commission Member Ellis raised. And by all means, I'm certainly open to any more discussion on any of those or any additional questions that the commission might have. But just wanted to provide some context on some of those items.
All right, very good. I'll admit that a lot of this got away from me is, you know, being more...
It's riveting reading.
Yeah, more technical than my, you know, expertise.
Very, very riveting. I don't think that that's unique to anybody. We ended up carving out, when we went through with the city attorney, we carved out, I think it was close to three hours. We brought in lunch and we just sat down. And that was, I think the technical term was brutal for everybody involved. But yeah, it is very technical and not super fun reading.
Well, and I feel like we'll have to kind of lean on your expertise and that.
Tell us about 1848 Stormwater. Looks like a blanket removal.
Yeah, so that's a great question, actually. The city, over the last two years, has been working on establishing a storm drainage and runoff manual. It's meant as a tool to assist engineers of developers with navigating both our construction requirements and standards, but also just providing recommendations on best practices within engineering to evaluate runoff. So, what we've done is we're essentially eliminating this from code. And we're going to replace it with adopting the Drainage Design Manual by reference. And we'll have all of that information live in that manual and consolidate it into one location. So, yeah, it's, all of the information previously in this title is still applicable. It's just been consolidated into that manual.
It seems to be, seems to probably take away any conflicts if you have one text, right?
Correct, yeah. And that's some of the concern that we have is, you know, when we make a change, what if we forget to change it in all of the multiple locations? So, doing that consolidation helps, for lack of a better term, cover those bases. We go to one location, we'll make the changes there. And we've only got a few instances. You know, we've got an LID manual for the low-impact development. We now will have a drainage manual. We have our standards and specifications. So, we try to push whatever is applicable to those items, incorporate them by reference. And when changes need to be made, go make them in that manual and bring that manual to the council and commission. I've just been looking for the location here. One, one change that we have here. There we go, 1951. We, more frequently than we would like, run into issues where one development orders adjacent property that is not being developed at that time. And this has typically resulted in the city being responsible for coming in and removing a temporary turnaround for the fire department. It's required by the IFC, the fire code. So, a situation where you may have a temporary cul-de-sac installed at the end of a street because that's the end of the development. When the adjacent property develops, that temporary turnaround has to be torn out. A new curb has to be installed in the other development where it should be now that the turnaround is removed. And the city, in all of those instances, has been responsible for the costs of that. And each, each location is going to run anywhere between $50 and maybe $60,000 in removal costs for removing the asphalt. If there was any concrete curb or sidewalk, removing that, relocating it to its new location. And so, we, what we're trying to do is encourage something called a hammerhead. We've used it in one other development and it worked quite well where the turnarounds can be utilized as future driveways of homes. The fire trucks can use those if they need to turn around. So, that way, there's not unnecessary costs for a developer to have to put something in knowing full well that they're just going to have to come back later on and bear the cost of tearing that out. And it also doesn't fall to the city where, because two private individuals wanted to develop property at different times, it's tough to say, well, the community's going to go fund the work to tear that out and put it in. So, that was one of the other items that I was wanting to discuss. So, that's 1951, our, our attempt at taking a different approach so that it's more equitable for the city as well as the developer. And then, other than that, if there's any additional questions or comments from anything that I brought up earlier or otherwise,
We will still need to do a public hearing.
That's true. I suppose we can go ahead and do that at this point. So, we'll let you sit down. And we will open up a public hearing portion for anyone that would like to comment on these text amendments. This is your chance to come forward and talk. Seeing no interest here in the group, we can close the public hearing and move on to discussion. So, do we, do we feel like we need to talk about the things that you brought up? Those were great points that he kind of introduced at the beginning. But I wasn't sure if that meant we had kind of figured out that they were fine or, you know, what's the direction we want to go? I don't know if you have input or...
I trust staff to, to talk about it. And if, even if it didn't change, I trust their judgment. Just questions I have.
I think there's a couple of items after reading through your questions that I think we're interested in revisiting, especially the wording, starting from the bottom, 1958, that hyperlink. I think more of a clarification.
On where you're going?
Yeah, exactly. Some additional context on...
Where to find...
On why, why that, that title exists and where to go. There is an option, if people want to come in and pay to have a physical copy made of those specifications, that's an additional thing that we've talked about. You know, maybe we should include mention of that as well as the hyperlink. The standards and specifications are about 300 some odd pages. And so, we, we don't, we don't keep those on hand anymore since we've digitized them. But I think it's important to provide the option to people. The, the question about recording of the plats and what ability we have to restrict, as I mentioned, the city engineer is going to be coordinating with the city attorney on that this next week just to make sure that that verbiage, is that exactly what we want it to read? To stick more with what the current language is? Or do we want to make some adjustments and modifications? At the very least, if there are modifications, to clarify that the city isn't necessarily taking a position that we have the authority to record or not record. But maybe as Melinda pointed out, that, you know, that the city wouldn't be taking items to the county. Just better clarifying there. And had the question about feasibility. I think we've clarified on that a little bit, that we do have that definition that lives in the LID manual. And I think we do incorporate that by reference in both Title 18 and 19. It appears so. Yeah, if there's any, any additional input, I don't think this is by any means the, the final opportunity, both for the public, but as well as commission members as we have an additional step that we'll be going through with council making this and some additional ordinance modifications. So, I do appreciate the time spent looking through this. As I stated, it's, it's easy for me to kind of go through it because this is where we live. But even then, it's, it's a little monotonous. And for you and other elected bodies to go through that, that's what I would call a labor of love. So, thank you.
Well, and I feel like just the explanation we've gotten here has helped me a little bit. Also, that trust in you and staff, you know, taking care of and hitting all the important points and things.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have any concerns. I don't know if I would know if I should have a concern with a few of these things, but I do, I do trust our staff quite a bit, so.
I have something that is probably nitpicky.
Please.
Just 19-4-3, final plat requirements. Just, you guys changed that to complies and it doesn't read right.
Okay.
The final plat shall comply's? Or is it changed to comply?
Complies.
It's comply? Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out where the...
What's happening?
What was crossed out? I didn't bring my glass, excuse me.
Which one was it? Yeah.
I had also noticed another typo on one of those, but we'll make sure that gets corrected.
Perfect.
What, what number was it under, Deborah?
19... It's fine. I just couldn't tell which part was being struck out.
Right at the very top.
Even higher.
Just right there, in the blue.
Okay.
Final plat shall comply with requirements. It looked like it was complies, but...
That's a valid question. I say this partially jokingly, but also partially dead serious. We live west of the railroad tracks. And we, I grew up drinking the well water in Las Cavesville. So, I wouldn't put a typo past me for sure. I think in closing on my part, I am not here frequently with the planning commission. But I, as a resident of Cavesville, as well as a staff member, I appreciate the time that goes into this. And I know that that's probably an understatement to say that that's a thankless endeavor oftentimes. But appreciate that as staff and as a community and appreciate your, your time and opportunity being here with you tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I don't know, my other concerns, conversation?
Are we making a recommendation tonight? It just says public hearing, I'm majoring.
Yeah, we can.
Well, I move to recommend approval of the text amendments to Title 18 Building Regulations and Title 19 Subdivisions.
We have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? We'll start the voting at the end here.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will move on to the city council. We will move on to Item Number 4, Approval of the Minutes from May 8, 2025. Only one week's worth of minutes to do, that's...
We locked three of them out last week.
Anyone have any concerns with the minutes?
I wasn't here.
I wasn't, but I listened, so I feel like I could vote.
I did read them.
So, I make a motion to approve the minutes of... So I make a motion to approve the minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty five.
Can second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right. Other matters that come before the planning commission?
All right, three things. The survey for our small area plan did close last week and we ended up with about five hundred and twenty responses, which I think is pretty phenomenal. So the consultants working on finalizing information for the existing conditions, which is kind of the first step in all of this, that they look at, you know, they'll look at everything from is there missing sidewalk and are there bike lanes and all sorts of things in that context? And they will present that to us on June twelfth at a joint city council planning commission We, I still am a little up in the air to know if we might need to have some agenda items, so I would say plan on seven o'clock for sure. If we have some agenda items, we may start the workshop at six and then go into planning commission business after the consultant would present.
This will be on the twelfth?
June twelfth, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have any public hearing notices or anything that we've prepared yet, so the, I think main thing that might come in would be a conditional use permit that for business licensing, we generally like to get those on an agenda as soon as possible. We also this week held a stakeholder meeting for our historic Main Street area. It was a little disappointing with the turnout. We had maybe four businesses out of thirty-five or forty's of those that I contacted. Unsurprisingly though, their main concern is parking.
Pretty much all it was, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so it was our Main Street businesses across the street that, you know, we know that's a concern down here and that'll probably come up in the existing conditions. There's a lack of parking on the east side of Main, or west side of Main Street, so. But it was, it was a conversation nonetheless and I also have done a review of Catalyst. One of the sub consultants did a market analysis. That'll be presented on June twelfth and it was some pretty interesting.
It was good.
Yeah, it was, it was actually really good, good information, good reading. You know, when I first started reading, like the first, maybe it was the second part of the paragraph, it's like Kaysville has a really strong economy and I kind of like, in my mind, I was like, okay, could you think of these other, you know, like if you have a huge mall or a huge, you know, auto sales, you know, like, but by the end of reading that document, I was quite convinced and, and I think the most convincing part of that is just that the vacancy levels that we have in any of our commercial buildings here in Kaysville is pretty much nonexistent. If it is available, it is occupied and, and so, you know, it kind of left me with a notion of, man, I wish we had more. And I think we do wish we had more.
And that's the problem, that's the issue.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't have enough, we don't have more.
We, we don't. We definitely, and, and so, but that's a good thing, right? Because when we do have those redevelopment opportunities, if we can add more commercial space in, what this market analysis is saying is that we can sustain more of that type of even, you know, retail office, commercial, even light industrial. So that'll be, I think, a very interesting presentation and Q and A session for both the planning commission and the council. So again, keep that on your calendars for June twelfth.
Will that be recorded? I'm going to be out of town, but I definitely want to.
Yeah, we will, we'll, we'll, we'll record it.
Great.
Yeah, we'll plan on doing that. So that way the public can go back and watch it later on as well. So I think that's all I have.
Seeing nothing else on the agenda, we will adjourn this meeting. With a packet this thick, I expected maybe a little longer.